Next, we're moving on to general items. Item number nine is 2013-14 Sustainable Communities Planning Grant Application. The amount of $975,000 for the Uba City Highway 20 Community Plan. Mr. Gale?
Good evening, Mayor Gale and council members again. It's this evening before you on a resolution to authorize city staff to apply for a Prop 84 Sustainable Communities Grant. We have applied for this grant two other times in 2010 and 2012, and we have taken a look at our grant each time, met with staff of the Strategic Growth Council who oversees this grant, and are asking for the council's support in submitting this. Let me give a little background about the Prop 84 Planning Grant. Prop 84 was passed in 2006. After that, there was legislation that was passed that created the Strategic Growth Council, and they came up with priorities. One of the priorities was to work with local communities in what they determine is sustainable communities. As a few years ago, it was actually about 2010, and then one time since, actually I shouldn't say once, at least twice, I've actually walked the entire corridor of Highway 20 between Highway 99 to the bridge, both sides of the street. I've met with probably 90% of all the businesses along this corridor, and when you ask questions about this area, they talk about its struggles, that it's dated developments, that, you know, one day there'll be future development along the highway corridor, and that we'll see redevelopment and new growth along what truly has been a very successful corridor, but at the current time is a little dated. We've seen development projects pop up, Popeyes, they redid their facility, AMPM redid their facilities, and there were no specific guidelines or standards for, not uniformity, but at least projects that, I don't want to say what's where I'm looking for, that has, I guess uniformity is a good word for it, along with, you know, standards for landscaping and different things that have been discussed. As part of this grant, what we're requesting is basically the creation of a specific plan or a community plan along that corridor. It takes along, takes the Highway 20 corridor and goes about two blocks deep, both on the north and south side. What would that entail, a full specific plan if we would receive full funding? One, obviously, and most importantly, are public workshops. We'd work hand in hand with the property owners and current businesses and the public on what's their desire for the future of that corridor. There'd be an update to the land use and zoning plans for that area, traffic study, infrastructure analysis, development standards, and economic analysis for that area. I had the opportunity to talk to a couple citizens today about this, and these are just some bullet points and questions that they brought up that I'd like to answer. I'm sure you'll hear some more, but at least to get us started, to get us started off. The first is why the use of consultants, and what type of consultants would be used. This project would take a significant amount of time. Currently, our community development department has one planner, which is actually your community development director, and the need for consultants would be key to ensure a timely completion of the grants. The question was brought up about local firms. Currently, we don't have a full planning consultant business that's here located locally. However, I do believe that the use of local staff members would be key. We have a few past planners that do some consulting work. Additionally, there's opportunities for the marketing side, public workshops, that as we put out an RFP to receive requests for proposals, we would definitely not just encourage, but require the use of as many local consultants as possible. The cost of the project of $975,000. We've gone out and asked some consulting firms what they believe the costs were. These are the estimates that they have given us. We could be funded anywhere from $100,000 to $1 million, depending on what the state requires, this is, or allows. This is the last opportunity that we have to apply for these funds, and we can adjust the program. However, some of the things that I mentioned before that would be included would have to be eliminated if we received less funding. Questions were brought up about if this would require bike lanes on Highway 20. No. The life of the plan. The life of the plan can continue on. One of the, one of the things that we, there's a couple of key commercial properties currently on Highway 20 that are what they call credit-worthy tenants, that will probably be vacating their properties, and the property owners have come and asked what they could do with their property. Unfortunately, it will require some significant planning and environmental requirements. With a specific plan slash community plan created for this area, we would be providing an opportunity for developers to come in and submit plans for building and not go through the entire planning process and the environmental document. So the life of the plan, it's based upon that SEQA document, and that SEQA document would allow it to stand, and I don't know if our city attorney would have any other questions or be able to provide better answers on that. Another question was brought up is what type of strings are attached from the state. The state does not require any type of approval from them other than following the guidelines that we submit for the grant application, which is much of what I just talked about. A question was how does this relate to Agenda 21? It doesn't. However, there are words within the grants that directly relate to Agenda 21, sustainable communities, smart growth, walkable, livable communities. Those are words that are important to those who are hesitant about anything related to Agenda 21. However, this plan is really an economic development tool for the city to see, you know, the future prosperity continue along Highway 20 and approve. The source of the funds, that these are tax dollars, and that we need to be diligent with any tax dollars, no matter where they come from, federal, state, or local. City staff agrees, and we will make sure and spend the dollar wisely, and make sure that it's not just a plan that sits on a shelf, but it's a plan that can actually be used to stimulate growth. Then one of the other questions was, you know, why can't this be developer-driven? One of the things that the city is and wants to be is business-friendly. Providing opportunities for developers to come in and almost have a shovel-ready project other than their plans is a great opportunity for the city to attract new business. These are just a few of the questions that were brought up to me on the phone today, and they're all really great questions that I think help this process move along. If we're awarded this grant, if we're allowed to apply for it, again, I believe the key part on this is it's preparing a plan for the future, for the continued and future improvements along Highway 20 between 99 and the 10th Street Bridge. So this time, I can answer any questions of council, but I do know that there's a significant amount of comments from the public, too.
Any questions from council members during this?
One question to the mayor. We went through a process of public hearings and meetings for a plan for Highway 20 already. Never seen anything come out of that.
That is the Walkable Livables Communities Grant from SAICOG, and I do believe that that'll be coming before council at a future meeting. I do not know the exact status of it. Unfortunately, our community development director was not here today, so we weren't able to get a specific on it. However, that is something that we need to report.
This is separate from, completely different.
Yeah, this is totally different from that grant. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a point of clarification, I guess, Darren, is what we're talking about here is really a revitalization effort along Highway 20 that would fit into the current century that we're in. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And then moving forward, would then allow for those buildings to have a life of their own, and, you know, I look at the Highway 20 corridor, and oftentimes, if you want to shop at three locations, you go car, you know, by car. I'll use the example of Staples as one. If you want to shop there, if you're going to head over to Walgreens, that's another stop, and if you're going to swing by and go to Sears, that's a third stop along the corridor. And much of this develop, the development itself would be inclusive of one-stop-type shopping that may occur in a parcel, like many progressive cities?
Yeah, I think that it's a good example, that you bring up the Walgreens Chipotle pet store development, which is one development area with one access off of the highway, or maybe two, that you're able to connect into. Right now, one of the big issues on Highway 20 is the difficulties, and I hear this from businesses, they say their customers have difficulties getting in and out of their businesses. The reason that is is because there's driveways every few feet, and seeing, you know, a development that develops as a whole, where there's multiple projects together, would be extremely helpful. Like I said, these are not things that I'm saying myself, this is at least twice meeting with the majority of businesses on that highway corridor.
That's all I have at this point.
Darren, we were, we applied for the same grant twice in the past, and we were turned down. What makes it, what makes this one different that we're going to get approved this time around?
So each time, we've refined it significantly. The first go-around, we did poorly. The second time, we were two points, and one, there was two points where there was a threshold that they funded and did not fund. We were two points below that, and there was two projects in between us and those that were funded. We've already put the staff time into the grant app for this grant. It's taken little, very little time to actually update it based upon the Strategic Growth Council's comments, and we think it's at least, we would be missing out on an opportunity to at least apply. They're encouraging us to apply. They encouraged us last time, though, honestly. So we think we have a good chance at it, and we think it's a good opportunity.
So we can get anywhere from zero to $975,000?
Yep.
Correct. Any other questions?
Yeah, to the mayor. Darren, can you give me an example of what kind of things for a particular business, what would it do, what would it mean to the property owner of Calusa Highway or a business on Calusa Highway?
Yeah, so what would it do for current businesses? They don't, they won't see a lot of change if they're not willing to make changes to their facilities. Where you would see the changes in the future is as a property owner comes in who's having difficulty renting their facility, leasing it out, and they basically say, "We cannot get the rents that we want," and they're looking at redeveloping it, or they have someone that wants to purchase it and build it. I would tell you, 100% of my phone calls that come in looking for property is, "Show me a place on Highway 99 and Highway 20." There's very limited space, and we'll begin, and honestly, every property right now that's underutilized has someone looking at it currently. I mean, it, there's a pent-up demand on retail, and there's a lot of people out there looking. Now, how many of those will go through? I don't know, but I'm going to do my darndest to make sure that as many of them go through as possible. And I think we will start seeing in the next couple of years some of the existing facilities being torn down and rebuilt. This will provide all of the background that has to be done before they can do that. That's what this would do. So what would the change? The change will be visible. You'll have new facilities built on Highway 20 over the next 20 to 30 years. I think you'd see the, we're already seeing it. I don't think anyone ever thought that Kentucky Fried Chickens would have been, would have been torn down. Yes, it's a Popeyes, but you know, we're going to see more small retailers like that. They've put in significant improvements with landscaping. It would have been nice to have a standard when they came in the door to say, "This is what's required," where we were trying to work with them to come up with a standard instead of providing that to them, which slowed down the process, honestly.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Darren. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for a public comment. We've got several speaker cards here. The first one is Mike Geraldo. Oh. And then after Mike, Larry, if you just want to get up there in line and...
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Geraldo. I live at 869 Clark Avenue, apartment number eight. I thank you for this opportunity to put in my input. What I've been learning about Agenda 21, sustainable development scares me. I think we need to really take a look at it, the strings attached. I look at Plumas Street, all the money that we spent there, to me, I'm a landlord, an investor, I think we put way too many trees, we could have put one-third. I think if we go to this development here, they're going to put too many trees, too much maintenance, too much cost. I mean, we look at the divider going down Highway 20, it's not even maintenance now. We're not even taking care of what we have. I think it's important we take care of what we have. I see shopping carts all over. We don't even have a maintenance guy to go around and pick up all these shopping carts that are full of garbage. I think we need to take care of what we have instead of taking this money. And if we, if we do all this development, it's going to raise the price of rent in all these businesses, and they're moving out. Look how many places on Plumas are that are vacant and empty. And if, and if the city continues to buy houses, I'm selling my places, and I'm going to spend my full time watching what's going on in the city and helping. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mike. Up next is Larry, and after Larry is John Laramer.
Good evening, council members. My name's Larry Verga, 430 South George Washington Boulevard. My concern with Proposition 84 is that city councils, supervisors, whomever looks at it for grants, act like it's free money. It's taxpayer money, and it's my money, and it's no different than what I pay every year with my housing taxes. This is real taxpayer money. You guys are talking about spending a million dollars, $25,000 short of a million dollars for planning. And if you read Proposition 84, it is a Sustainable Communities Planning Grant, and Mr. Gale touched on the fact that it's not Agenda 21, but they happen to mention sustainable communities, sustainable development in there. That's not true. It is in there. That's where it was defined, that's where it came from, that's what Agenda 20, that's what Proposition 84 is all about, Proposition 32, Agenda 21. And if somebody took the time to read it, you'll find that it goes beyond that. It defines the intent as satisfying social inequity. And if you look at your very front page of the attachment number nine, item number two, promote equity. And they promote equity, and it's defined in Agenda 21, inequity is caused by property ownership. And these plans and these grants are intended to put constraints on property ownership. And that's exactly what the strings attached on this one will be. So if you read Agenda 21, you're going to find a lot of the terms, a lot of the words, and a lot of the intent of this grant. And Agenda 21 is not conspiracy theory, it is conspiracy fact. And all the communities are being hit with the same thing. You have your Delphi meetings where the people think they're putting input, but the decisions are already made, and then you announce what you're going to do, and say, "Oh, well, we met with the public, and this is what they decided to do." Well, that's a bunch of baloney, and these people know that. I recommend that you do not accept this Agenda 21 grant.
Thank you. John, and then after John is Pat Miller.
Yeah, first of all, you can see, John Laramer, 3726 Frakesway, Uba City. First of all, you can see there are a number of Tea Party Patriot shirts around here, and I would point out that there are a lot of people here that are Tea Party that aren't wearing them. And I ask you to take, take notice of who gets up and leaves at the end of this particular item. Now, there'll be many here, some at least, that don't like us, or don't like me, and there were, at the time of the American Revolution, Tories who didn't like the revolutions. The king's government was represented by those Tories. Our forbears would not tolerate the amount of control that the king sought to exert over his people. That's the reason why we have the Tea Party Patriots. And if you'll excuse my voice, I just, I'm eight weeks post-open-heart surgery. Anyway, I want to add to what Larry said. Agenda 21 is now called sustainable development. They figured out that Agenda 21 was a dirty word, and they instructed the proponents to call it sustainable, sustainable development, sustainable this, that, and the other thing. So that's what it is. And if you doubt that, you better look into it, because that's what it is. Now, pardon me, you may feel like Prop 84 is binding on you, and you have to do this. I submit that you do not have to do it, any more than our forbears had to do it, King torched it. You can stand up and be counted, and look after the people in this city, in this community, and not what the United Nations wants to do, or the globalists want to do. What they want to do is evil. There's no question about it. It's evil. At least it's contrary in every respect to American freedom. They want to stack and pack. We heard them talking about that. They want to stack and pack. They want transportation quarters. They want to get us out of our carts. They want to make us walk. They want to get people off the land, closing roads, you name it, Wildlands Project. In my condition, for example, I couldn't walk from Staples to Walgreens very easily. I have a difficult time just walking from there up here. Now, I'll get better, but there are a lot of people worse off than I am. And so they're going to say, "Well, you can't have a car drive from point A to point B. We're going to have you walk or get there in some other fashion." And I suggest to you that that's evil. Pardon me. Pardon me, I'm sorry. Let me get my breath. This money is a carrot, no, it's not a water issue, thanks. This money is a carrot in front of us, or if you will, an apple, a poisoned apple, being dangling in front of you, just like the apple was, was offered to Adam and Eve. And they took of the apple, and mankind was cursed. And I don't care particularly if you individuals curse yourselves, but I don't want you to curse me and the rest of the community. The Bible says, and I believe in the Bible, "Man was ordered to go forth and subdue the earth, not be subdued by it." And our forefathers were interested in liberty, not in being controlled in every aspect of our lives. So I ask that you not apply for that grant. Reject the poisoned apple. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we've got quite a few speakers still left. If I can request that speakers be allotted to three-minute time here. Pat Miller, and after Pat is Carla.
Good evening, gentlemen. I had a prepared speech, but after hearing Mr. Gale, I realized that I just wanted to address primarily one element of the proposal, and that is the transportation. Highway 20 is a state highway, all the way from the bridge to 99, and for the city to make recommendations on any changes to that highway would be very improper. They, you don't have control, Caltrans has control. Several years ago, Caltrans widened certain areas of the highway between Plumas, Plumas Street and Lywood Boulevard to make the traffic flow better. And then we had a, it was a, I've got it here, Walkable and Livable Communities Institute Study, and that was, that was $100,000 from SAICOG, and it was $10,920 from the city, and that happened last year, and it was started before the council gave approval, was supposed to produce a report, we haven't seen the report, and we're hearing about it now. And the other, one of the other issues is that Mr. Gale said he had lots of interest in the properties along Highway 20, and there are very few properties available, so I'm really concerned about why we need this study at $975,000. That's a lot of money. And as Mr. Laramer said, that money is the carrot. That's the carrot to get the city to do what SAICOG and the federal government and the United Nations want. And I'm urging you not to do that. I think this grant application is a means to fund the city's staff members in positions that are, again, unnecessary expenditure of taxpayer dollars. I urge this council to start looking out for the citizens of Uba City and stop looking for ways to get grant money to support city bureaucracy. Thank you very much.
And after Carla is Deborah Gaylord.
Carla Verga, 430 South George Washington Boulevard in Uba City. We had a speaker that was well-advertised in the paper and on the radio, talking Agenda 21, and not one of our council members bothered to come to hear this lady speak. So apparently, you all know about Agenda 21, or you think you already know. So I don't understand why this is even being allowed to be considered. And plus, you've got the other grant monies that you went after, and that just is floating off there and still being considered, but here we're going after another one. I don't understand why you even allow this. We know what Agenda 21 is, and you know what Agenda 21 is, because we've talked to you before about this. I strongly urge you to vote no on this, and I'm really glad some of you are up for reelection.
I was very concerned last year with the walkability and bikability grant that you guys had, where the work was started before it ever, ever came before you guys to vote on the contract. And that really got me concerned when I saw yet another study on the same stretch of, stretch of road. My philosophy on grants is that we should not get grants, grants are tax money, it's not free. We should not get grants or apply for grants that are not going to be spent to benefit our local economy. We should not get grants that aren't going to make a difference in a relatively short time. 30 years out is not a relatively short time. Suppose we go ahead and get this grant, and we have this nice, really nice plan that looks real pretty on paper, but we don't have money to implement it. Before we get money to implement it, Caltrans decides that they're going to fix up the Road 2, and some of the things that fit in with Caltrans' plan are, contradict the things that are in our plan. Then, in that case, our plan would be basically worthless, and we'd have to start all over and maybe spend another million dollars. I think that if we're going to do any kind of a plan at all along Calusa Avenue, we should do a plan in conjunction with Caltrans and work with them, so that we only need one plan instead of having a potential for three plans. Also, I did notice, I did notice that some of the money that was spent on that plan last year that really got under my skin was used as in-kind matching funds on this, when the staff report says there is no requirement for matching funds, but we're still showing it on the, on the budget. That is a concern to me, because it's contradictory. I don't like contradictions, I like things to line up. I also noticed that we are using some of the money for staffing, for grant administration by City of Uba City, 1014. I think that if you want, really want to get a, do this study, that you should hire people from Uba County, Uba and Sutter County, and have Uba, local people receive the money, local people circulate the money in our economy. So I urge you to vote no on this as it stands. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Mercino, 1660 Sharon Drive.
Stephanie, can you pull that microphone up so they can hear you? There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think the bottom line is, everybody wants this. Touche. That's what we're chasing after. What I was hearing, okay, we've got people that want to come in, but they want something for nothing, they want it to look great. Other people, we want to improve our property so we can get more money. And others are saying, "But we don't want to pay for it. This is free money. It comes from SAICOG." It comes from CACOG. Except if you hear about Agenda 21, that's, you think the poison apple is bad? This is worse, because that affects not just you, it affects your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren. It goes many generations down. So the decisions we make today affect all our posterity. You're thinking, huh, it's just a few rotaries, it's just Highway 20, it's a study, this is free money, we can improve our economy, get jobs for everybody, and then you fall into line. Okay, we talk about AM PM. I don't know about you, but I think that was a, whoever is in charge of that planning commission should be drawn in court. Somebody's going to die. You go down there, and there's people out. I've had my car in the back hit. Why? Because there's a line there, and you can't do anything about it. There's more cars trying to get in than they could accommodate. What kind of planning is that? And then you want to go inside there? It's so skinny. I've got a Saturn, but I feel like it's like a million feet long, and I need to have it smaller than a bicycle. You take your life in your hands. But the new development, it's you can skip the planning department? If that's what we get with the planning, holy cows, get me the heck away. I don't want to hear it. And then we talk about, about what we have. I wanted to say, have any of you thought about the disabled or the blind? Right now, do you know how many accidents have had crossing Live Oak Boulevard by Burger King? You, what do you have for the blind so it's chirping? That's the law. Uba City, ah, heck, we don't have to, we don't have enough lawsuits, there's not cost, enough cost-benefit analysis. Take care of what we have. Think about, think about your decisions. What do we need a million-dollar study for? Who knows the community better than us? Yes, we need jobs. Yes, we need money coming out. But let's look at it creatively, not just the way CACOG wants to look at the redheaded stepchild looking at it. Face it, we're the bottom guys on the totem pole. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. If not, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back. Yes?
Can I say something?
Yeah, you can go to the podium, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Thomas Burns, and my address, 1885 Green Gate Street. And I've just kind of been taking it in and listening, and to me, it's more of a systemic problem. And I think it's more than this city council, but it's all over, all the city councils. And my kind of, my evaluation on it is, get the money, get the money, right? You know, we can use the money, we can try and make our city prettier. But in reality, the money should be staying with the people. You know what I'm saying? We, we should pay less taxes. And that's kind of the way I see it. So it's not free money. I mean, it's coming from the people. And I'd like to see a little lower taxes, and quit getting into my pocket. So that's what I think about it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. If not, I'm going to bring it back to the council for their comments, discussion. The mayor. Yes.
I don't know, first, to anyone from the Tea Party that suggests that there's a possibility we haven't read Agenda 21, come talk to me. I've read it front to back. I know it, I know the contents of it. I have, I have listened to Glenn Beck. And so there's, there's many parts of what is said related to Agenda 21 that I agree with, with the general principles in which you have laid out. Absent some of the, their really far-reaching comments tonight, this money is not coming through CACOG. This is a state of California. When, when staff says that there's no matching funds, it's in the staff report written as that. And yes, we are all taxpayers here. We pay taxes. We understand what the concerns are, and we all want lower taxes. No one, and in this council, if you've looked over the, over the course of time, with the exception of our enterprise funds, what we've done to try to limit what our expenditures are in this city. This is not about trying to resurface and make Highway 20 different. This is the, the lying areas adjacent to this corridor, two blocks to either side. That's what this is about. When I started working for the City of Uba City at the corner of 99 and 20, was one of the most unsightly locations, and that was the Meeks Building Center. When they rebuilt and moved, that was an improvement for our town. They scraped that lot, and after a few years, brought in a more robust economy to that If anybody wants to argue that, raise your hand. The whole purpose of this, in listening to Mr. Gale, is when you go through, and Stephanie was the one that said it, you, you perfectly said what Mr. Gale was trying to address with, with AM PM. There was no plan. Is that the best use of that corner? He's not putting that up there as, as some monument for the city. But what was the plan? What did he say about Popeyes? If there had been a plan? That's what this is about. This is about being able to plan that area adjacent to Highway 20 and make it more robust, make it usable, make it so you can go to one location. I, I can't tell you how many years it's been since you've seen any, any major movement in those, in that corridor for buildings. It's been a long time, and we use those buildings until they're ready to fall down. And in some cases, they have fallen down. The old Fremont Hospital had to be taken down. Why? It was dilapidated. Do we have more of those along that corridor? Absolutely. Is it a free enterprise? You bet. But this is an opportunity, when they do want to change that, that they can come in and move this forward more quickly, and not be bogged down in the paperwork, in the bureaucratic paperwork of making sure that all of the environmental documents are in place, all of the, the wind of the council of the day deciding what the, what the buildings are going to look like. With that, I'm going to, I'll leave it to the other council members.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I see you were taking a bunch of notes.
Quite a few here.
Actually, I'd like to have Darren, if you could address some of the issues that were brought up by members of the public.
So I won't restate the issues that were brought up on, on, as part of my presentation. The first one, I think the key one, is Caltrans. Actually, we were one of only a few that received a letter of support from Caltrans from our past grants. Jody Jones did sign a letter. We've requested one for this one, and it has not changed. I don't know if we'll receive it in time, but Caltrans, and it's something that I failed to mention, they're a key player in this, and play a key part of this project. I was going to mention about the AM PM project, and then this, the other one was talking about shopping carts. I'll take the opportunity to talk, actually tomorrow is part of what the city is calling Clean and Safe. We'll have a citywide collection of shopping carts. This is the city staff using city resources to go out and clean our streets. We believe that there's probably anywhere between 300 and 1,000 shopping carts throughout our city that our executive team, Public Works, and Parks Department will be doing tomorrow, and we'll have a report back to the council on that as we try to clean up the corridor. And it's not just us cleaning, it's also working with our retailers, the California Grocers Association, in how best to handle that, so that it's not a reoccurring problem. And then, then the other issue that was brought up is, that I did not talk about, was how increased rates would push out businesses. It is true. There will be increased rates along this corridor, which we absolutely see as a positive thing, that we will see businesses that have higher revenues, which then in turn require usually higher rents. We hope not to push out any business, and part of my job is working with businesses to find out what's the best location for them. Currently, right now, the rents on these older buildings are very low, because they cannot get the people that they want in them as a result of, of access. So, so there is a, I don't see that as a negative thing. I see it as a positive thing. As you see new growth, you definitely see increased rents. Those were the issues. Are there any other issues, Councilmember Dukes, that you'd like me to touch on?
It was said many times regarding this grant money being free money, and it, and it is tax money. It's, it's not free money, and whether we accept this grant or not, it's not going to go back to your pockets, because it's money that's already been collected by the state. And the state is not going to write you a check and send that money back to you. And if we don't use money to improve our community, it's going to go somewhere else. And we lose the opportunity to make our community look better. If you look at Highway 20, that section of highway that we're talking about, there's been no improvement on that highway probably for the last 20 years, other than, as, as Pat mentioned, the widening of, of the area there by Pluma Street and Live Oak. But as far as the maintenance of it, that's, this is part of another study that we'll be addressing, but the reality is Caltrans is responsible for it now, and they're not doing it. We want to take the responsibility as a community and make this a better-looking street for our neighborhood.
Any other questions from the council members' comments?
One of the things that I do want to add, and I think you've all touched on it, and that is grant monies, what cities are able to do with grant monies and what they cannot do with grant monies. Looking back, applying for two large projects that we had, would have not gotten, would have not been able to complete had it not been for the grant monies. The first one had to do with the levy project, that was state, federal, local matches. Had we as a community not come together and, and helped fund those particular projects, there's no way that we would have gotten this levy started to be fixed. And we've gotten one mile of the 44 miles that's going to be fixed. In addition to that, we've got the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project. And that took everything from the state, the local, the federal, CACOG, everything coming to back here to trying to get the Fifth Street Bridge. All of the monies for that project are earmarked, and that project is slated to begin in 2015. So we are looking to have a four-lane replacement bridge, with our goal to have four lanes from the bridge all the way to Highway 99. Somebody made a comment about houses and stuff. That's when you buy the houses, when the market's really, really down, so that you have a, a plan in place, so that you have a planned community coming out, because it doesn't do any good to have a road, have a bridge, and you're still stuck with that two lanes coming into Bridge Street. That's what our goal is, coming across. We're all done answering questions. It's back at the council? No.
I have a point of order, though.
We're all done, Pat. We really are.
We have a point of order.
Well, we're, the discussion is still at the council. I have not, I haven't gone back to the public yet, so it's still, it's, it's a discretion of the mayor if I want to go back and forth, and I really don't want to have this thing go back and forth, because we're still discussing it at the council level.
I understand.
And, and once I get done, right, once I get done of what I want to say, then we can see if we want to go ahead and open it up some more for discussion. So we have, we have options of having this grant money coming in. It's our options, whether we take them or not. It's on these projects such as levy, such as the bridge, that is made of safer, made traffic a little bit slower from this. And I think the vice mayor said is, yes, and I think Pat said it, is that this project, if we move forward, A, it has to be done with Caltrans, it can't be done something by ourselves, number one. But number two is, this is the second time we've applied for this grant, and it's the second time we've, we've failed of obtaining, well, this will be the third time. We've, we've applied for it twice, so this will be the third time going for it, trying to get it approved. We could get $25,000, we can get $200,000, or we can get the $975. That's going to determine what we can do. If we get $100,000, there's not much you can do trying to do a study for $100,000 for this particular deal. So, any other comments? Okay. Pat?
I believe it was Councilman Buckland that said there was no local match. And in the staff report, it says draft budget in-kind match of 15,000, 5,000, and 100,000. So there is a match, and I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. What's the recommendation of the council?
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Starkey. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Nope. Carrie's unanimous, I'm pleased. Thank you. Item number 10, King Avenue Safe Rot School.
Need to, excuse myself.
You need to excuse yourself, yes.